Today is March 20th, 2025 at 6:30 PM and I'm going to make a chair statement. This meeting is being recorded by the zoning board of appeals. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson me at this time. You're recording for?
Greenfield.
Okay. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20G, quote, "No person shall address a meeting of the public body without permission of the chair and all person shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the persons to withdraw from the meeting. And if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting." So, don't worry about it. Um, okay, so that's called to order. Mr. Chair, Mr. Clerk, would you please read the application, first application?
Yes, application of Bill and Billy Rosenberg for the property located at 794 Colerain Road, assessors map, R34 lot 65, which is located in the rural residential RC zoning district for special permit pursuant to sections 200-4.2, C1, and 200-3.8, excuse me, 8.3, and 200-8.4 of the zoning ordinance in order to allow farm with multiple farm animals and land less than five acres at this location.
Okay, sitting on the panel tonight are?
Peter Rosniak.
Debbie Jokes.
Mark Maloney.
Greg Green.
David Singer. Okay, and the applicant is here?
Yeah.
Would you like to come forward, both of you? Bring another chair if you wish. You can sit down if you want, or you could stand, whatever you feel comfortable. Please tell us your name, your address, what you intend to do, where you intend?
Billy, Bill Rosenberg.
Okay.
794 Colerain Road, Greenfield, Mass.
Okay.
We have a small farm. I believe I wrote it down, what we have, two alpacas, six goats, four sheep, four ducks, two mini donkeys.
So you have an animal?
Mm-hmm.
And you're looking for us to give you a special permit to permit what you already have, is that correct?
That's right.
Um, so, um, we don't, I can't, we can't show everybody here the map, but can you describe verbally how the layout exists on your property? I was able to see it, but at least people who are listening can hear, you know, how everything's laid out. Would you do that?
There's a large barn. Behind the barn, there is an area that has a roof over it and both sides of that area are fenced in with a six-foot fence. Um, and the, there is another area that has, um, it's a small shelter for them to go in and the animals have access to both sides of the fenced-in area and the under area with the roof. There's also a large field that we can expand the fencing on. On the other side, um, I don't know if you saw when you were at the house, you were probably on the side where the goats are.
We saw the donkeys too, on that side.
Where the donkeys are.
I saw the whole thing, thanks, yeah.
There's a, there's a larger field back there that we own and it goes up onto the hill that is also able to be fenced in if need be for them.
Okay. Um, but right now, what you're presenting us with is this drawing that you presented. And this, and this is what you're asking for? Are you asking for an area that's bigger than this?
No, this is what I'm asking for.
Tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Just a quick question, how much, how much land is this that you're being this on? Is it, it's not your entire property, so?
No.
Is this an acre?
We have two and a half acres and we didn't have the five needed to have animals.
And this is the entire two and a half acres that I'm?
No.
No, no.
I don't, I honestly couldn't tell you the, the space in acres.
If, I would say that it looks, if I may, it looks, I'll help guide you on how to explain it to me and you can do it as well. Um, it's kind of like a dog kennel-y area around the garage. They're calling it a barn, but there's a garage and so they've moved the fence outside and back in that one garage area and the rest of the property is open. Going back to the house is open and then they own up over a hill and that's open. So it's, it's almost like you came to a kennel, uh, you know?
I, I mean, just, is this, is this where the animals are restricted or did they go to? This is where all the animals are restricted to?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Yes, Mark.
Um, I was just wondering if in terms of the, so I, I know that you're applying just to kind of get in compliance in terms of the animals that you currently have. Do you have thoughts or intentions about acquiring more animals? This is it?
This is it.
Would you be open to a permit that granted a condition that the permit was about this number of animals and not to exceed that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Cool, that's all I need to know.
Yes.
Thank you.
I did write something up about, um, these animals were rescued, with the exception of Ozzy, our pig. We had him since a baby, so he's 10. Um, so I did write a thing up requesting the permit. Um, but we also realize our animals, we don't want to outlive them. So we're not looking to continue getting them. We just want to keep what we have.
Yeah.
And enjoy what we have.
Thank you.
So let me ask a question. If you were, if two of the sheep at some point either go someplace else or they don't think they die, would you plan on replacing them or would the numbers go down as?
The number will go down as we get older.
So number goes down, there's animals passing?
As animals pass.
Or you let them go? Or you take them off?
Oh.
Okay, maybe you won't.
When they die, the number will go down.
And what about breeding?
Everybody is neutered. No breeding.
Um, Debbie has a question.
Um, I have two questions. When did you purchase the property and when did the animals get moved in?
We purchased the property, oh, we moved into the property on April 22nd, two years ago. This April 22nd will be two years. Um, and the animals moved in when we moved in, um, well? Not all of them. Ozzy moved in, our pig, with us because we had him prior. Um, and then, and Belle, our donkey, moved in that same day also. And then the other ones came shortly after we moved in.
So, so is it fair to say that the animals that you have now have been living on the property for about a year and a half to two years?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question. Uh, Chuck, do anything? Okay. Um, one of the things that's been mentioned by a neighbor and it certainly came to my attention is, are there any ordinances or regulations? Has there been a health person from the Board of Health or from the city? Is there an animal?
I have a letter that I wrote and to, to go over what she wrote, so I can?
You were right, you're telling us what she told you?
No, 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 no. I have answers to everything that she had.
Oh, answers to the question that her neighbor wrote?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, that's good. But the more specific question is, have you been contacted by or have you communicated with?
We have.
That department of the city that deals with animals?
No, we have, we have two large animal vets, South Deerfield and Amherst, that come out twice a year for vaccinations, for deworming and for physicals.
Is this part of a, of what you're supposed to do or? I don't know anything about this. Is there like a regime? Is there like a?
No, a lot of people that have farm animals, a lot of them that have farm animals don't do that. But these aren't just farm animals. These are, these are our life. So we have them come out twice a year. Um, South Deerfield's for the alpacas because Amherst doesn't need to do alpaca and Amherst comes out for all the other ones.
So no one from the town of Greenfield, city of Greenfield, has given you any instructions on how to do this?
No, let's go by our vets, the vets that we have already in place.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Anybody from, first we'll go from the screen. Anybody on the screen have any questions or comments?
I'm, I'm.
I, I, okay, good luck. Okay, uh, now, anybody from the audience? Yes, yeah?
I live three houses down.
You say your name and?
In Gevery, 7724.
Okay, thanks.
Some of your property is in the woods, is that correct? I mean, it's 2.1 acres, is that correct also?
No, there's a little, there's an addition to that. Um, and when we bought the house, it was very, I don't understand it quite honestly. So I don't really, do you know the exact acreage?
No, when she came and looked it up, she said it was 2.7 or 2.8.
Because of that other section that we bought with it.
Right.
My concern is animal welfare. I don't think you have enough open space and enough grazing area for the alpaca, the goats, the sheep, the donkeys. And isn't there someone from the town that can do an animal stuff and go out and look at the barn, look at the land, the amount of land and the amount of animals? I mean, I don't want you to get rid of all your animals, but I want the animals that are there.
That's why we have the vets.
So then Bill?
Well, no, the vet doesn't do this.
Speak to me, please.
The vet does not do that. That would be an animal inspector, I don't know if it's the animal control officer or, or what. And I'd like to know where the animal waste is going and the enclosures look to me like garden fencing, um, for the low spire. And I'd like some assurance in acting of a petting farm zoo animal therapy program out of the park.
What was the last one?
Uh, petting farm zoo animal therapy.
Okay, thank you. Bales? Anybody from the audience?
It's the only question.
The cellular audience?
Is it only questions or is it time for comments too? I know there's a piece that comes after.
Um, your, your job in, in here is to comment.
Okay.
And you can ask questions, but if you have comments, if you live in the neighborhood, you want to say something, then please, please step up, stand up if you will and let me know your name and address.
Hello, so Holly Alexander, 808 Colerain Road. We live right next.
Yep.
And so we see the animals a lot. They're well cared for, they're well fed, Billy and Bill are out there all the time. So we've seen no problems with them getting out, having other people come and visit them other than Billy and Billy and their guests. Um, so we, we've had nothing but good experiences with them. So that's sort of, everything is clean, it doesn't smell, the animals seem happy. We enjoy having them nearby. The goats are literally hilarious. So we've, we have a lot of direct contact, so they're really on our side, like on our shared vine and they've been nothing but well taken care of. We have seen the vet out there with them. Now, we see these guys coming out, feeding them, bringing hay, bedding, instructing, you know, when they constructed all the, you need to do some things like that for sun coverage and things like that. So we see no issues from our, our perspective. So these guys have been great, the animals have been great, everybody seems very well.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, when do I have the reason to record the correspondence?
Yes, in a second. Let, anybody else have anything to say? Okay, please, go ahead, read that, let's.
This is a transmittal memo dated February 19, 2025 from the Department of Planning and Development. The property located 794 Colerain, assessors map, 34 lot 65. If there's no comment, I have a similar email or Gmail from Daniel Smith from the fire department who indicates they have a comment. Transmittal memo dated February 19, 2025 from the department. Yes, second one, Department of Planning and Development, no comment. I have one from the Public Works Department from Glen Robinson, again dated February 25th, 2025. The Department of Public Works has reviewed the proposed site plan and special permit applications submitted by Bill and Billy Rosenberg to allow a farm with multiple farm animals and land less than five acres and has the following comments. The VPW water and sewer policy reads 1.5. There shall be only one water service per building if multiple dwelling units exist within the building and no independent services for water mains shall be provided to accessory buildings to include farms, excuse me, barns, garages, accessory dwelling units or in-ground irrigation systems. A water service to the barn, garage, accessory dwelling unit or in-ground irrigation system shall be extended from the primary building at the owner's expense. There is no city sewer on the Colerain Road, therefore there is no consideration on that project. Permit required, an excavation trench permit will be required if, for any earth excavation to do this project. A Gmail dated March 19th, 2025 from Amber L. Fox. Dear Board, Dear Board, I can speak to the proper care and keeping of any livestock other than chickens, as I am an expert, as I am no expert, but I would like to note that the residents of this property are wonderful and have never, have been nothing but kind and generous at every turn. We live next door and their livestock fencing directly butts our property. The owners asked for permission before building and stuck to the agreement we came to. They tend to have, they, they tend to multiple, multiple times a day with food, water and enrichment and there haven't been any unintended animals wandering around at any point. Bill and Billy are lovely people who adore their pets. These animals provide a great deal of comfort and delight. Living next to them, I have had no complaints for them, for them about any agricultural smell or notes. Then I do have regard for the distinct scent of Martin's farm on a, on a damp day or the tractors, hay wagons and manure spreaders that traverse our, our road. We live in the meadows, it's a farm, it's farm country. I love the sound of these animals and I love the people as neighbors. I have no complaints about letting them keep whatever they desire and are able to care for them. Thank you for your time and attention. Uh, this is a Gmail dated February 23rd, 2025 from Betsy Fraker, Dear Eric. As a neighbor of Billy and, excuse me, Bill and Billy Rosenberg, on Colerain Road, my husband and I am writing in support of them and their farm animals. They take loving care of them and are planning to expand their fenced-in range once you give them the green light, green light to keep the animals. Our grandchildren and any other town guests love to visit them and Billy always greets us, Billy too, when she is not, when she is not away at work and to tell us happily about each sheep, goat and alpaca personalities. We will be out of town on March 13th, but hope that there's, hope that this letter above for our support. Best regards, Betsy and Alan Fraker. A Gmail from Megan Estes dated March 18th, 2025. Dear Eric, I was trying to find an email for David Singer, chairperson of the zoning board of appeals, so I hope you can forward my message. I saw the notice of public hearing about 794 Colerain Road in the March 5th recorder. Unfortunately cannot attend the meeting on the 20th. My name is Megan Estes and I have been a resident of Colerain Road for 56 years. My family estate has been at 684 Colerain Road since the 1940s. I reside on Meadow Lane, but I still own the estate at 684 Colerain Road and have two miniature donkeys. My family has had livestock at that property continuously since the 1940s as my grandfather had a large chicken farm and then my father Kendall Estes always had horses. Throughout the years, we also had goats, sheep, fowl, et cetera. Our property, unlike the one at 794 Road, is set back away from the neighbors and we have a large three-stall horse barn and horse fencing on a large lot. When the people moved into 794, I noticed quite soon that, soon after they had all sorts of animal, llamas, sheep, donkeys, birds, pigs, goats and more. What I would like to point out to the board is that unlike the other established farms on the road, these people do not have adequate fencing for their animals or the type of animals. It is a very flimsy-looking four-foot tall fence and I am surprised the animals have not gotten loose and run into the road. Where their property is located is at the base of the mountain. We regularly see bobcats, bears, fisher cats, coy dogs, fox and other prey that without adequate fencing or housing pose a danger to the animals. When Nicole from the Board of Health was at my farm last year, I was inspecting, I asked her about the setup and she, she was not even aware that there was a, there was now a farm at that address. In addition to the lack of proper fencing, these animals should not at all be running together. I do not know where they are piloting the manure and from their animals or if they are keeping the conditions clean. I walk almost daily and, and the smell from the road. There, there was never a farm on that property, so I don't know if there was, there is even adequate housing for the animals. The neighbors are located in close proximity and there is a strong odor of Billy goat that is noticeable from just walking by. The Colerain is, the Colerain Road is zone residential agricultural park. I write, as I am concerned for the conditions, health and safety of the multitude of animals crammed into the space at that address. The town has a medical doctor for the Board of Health and perhaps a veterinarian should be a good addition to that. Thank you for your consideration of my observations, Megan Estes.
That's all the full starts, Mr. Chair. Billy, do you want to read your, to whom the concern into the record? I know this sits in front of you.
This is a response to that one, that email.
Have a response to the email that you want to say?
Yes.
Please do, okay, go ahead.
And I also have that one, if you want me to?
No, the response would be fine, thanks.
Um, in response to the letter you received from Megan Estes concerning our animals, I'd like to address these concerns now. My first response is Megan does not live within the 300 feet radius. She simply walks by our house every day. So if she's walking by and had concerns about our animals, she could have simply come to our door, introduced herself and addressed them with us right away, face to face. We would have assured her that we have, have confided with professionals regarding our animals' living situation and would, and it would have been, and it would have ended there. Unfortunately, there are those people who feel the need to stir the pot rather than approach them in a friendly manner. They don't realize or just don't care about the impact their words or actions may have on another person's life. We don't know Megan and she doesn't know us. And her words, and yet her words, as inaccurate as they are, have the potential to destroy our happiness. She has no idea of the distress she has caused us, which is really sad. I want you to know, we have two different large animal vets, the South Deerfield and Amherst, that come twice a year to update vaccines, deworming and give physicals. Both offices have reassured us that our animals are healthy and well cared for and when asked, they said they are totally fine living together. They enjoy each other's company. We just feed them separately as they require different feed and different minerals. We also have a ferrier that comes every six weeks for the donkey's hooves. We have a person from New Hampshire that comes for the alpaca shearing, feet trimming and teeth grinding. We have a person from Connecticut that comes up to trim Ozzy's tusks and feet, our pig. We have a person that comes to shear our sheep and another person that comes to trim the goat's feet and the sheep's feet. I can provide names and numbers of all of them for you. Most small farms have alpaca or llamas with their herd to keep predators away from the flock. That is their job to protect. In the two years we've been here, we have never seen anything other than deer on our back hill, nor have our animals ever gotten out of their six-foot fence, not four. Our animals are family and cared for as such. They are named and have plenty of space, food, love and affection. They are happy, healthy animals and they are clean animals as it does not smell, as she states in her letter, as we have had all our male goats, sheep, alpaca and donkey neutered to prevent such smells. I would like her and you to know, we are kind, loving people that live a simple life with our animals, that's our happiness. Anyone that knows us knows this about us. The bottom line is they are everything to us and we are everything to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicants? We're all set? Okay, all right, so. So what happens now is we have another hearing right after you and we have to attend to that and then we'll, we'll take maybe a little break and then we'll decide this application and their application tonight. So if you want to take a walk for a couple of minutes, that'll be good. You can stick around, whatever you want to do. Okay. Here, your upstairs. My goodness, gentlemen, I always have you speak for the record. What's your name?
My name is Roy Darlin.
Yeah.
I live at 788 Colerain Road.
Excellent there.
Yeah, I have no problem with the animals over there. Maybe there's a little too many sometimes, but they do not bother at all. Not like having a booster, throwing all the time. The donkeys bay, but they're quieted down quite a bit. Don't see any noises. Have no issues with them, but no, they're, they're good neighbors though.
Well, thank you for coming and thank you for?
Yep, I just, and I have never smelled any odor from there. Usually, yeah, chickens and stuff like that, yeah. Uh, which they, but they have, but I have not seen that either, but what their secret is. We did it.
A lot of time they pension.
Yes. I remember the year that they went up the truckload of chicken that were on Plain Road and, and Colerain Road there. You guys have plowed it in within a week because it spoke so bad. You couldn't drive by it, you had to hold your breath, big Y all the way up.
So it's not like so bad. It's not like that, all right? Well, thank you.
Yep.
You're right.
Yep.
Okay, is it? All right, next application, this clerk.
Application, Amber Ward for property located 305 Will Street, assessors map, 88 lot 18, which is located in the general industrial G-DI zoning district for special permit pursuant to sections 200-8.3, 200-8.4 and Appendix A, Tables of Use of the Zoning Ordinance in order to allow cat cafe slash lounge at this location.
Thank you. Okay, sitting on the panel are?
Peter Rosniak.
Debbie Jokes.
Mark Maloney.
Greg Green.
David Singer. And the applicant is our? Trying to take a hot seat?
Thank you.
Name, address?
Amber Ward, 221 Conroy Street.
And what you're doing at the property and?
What we'd like to do is have a cat cafe, cat lounge. You haven't been to one? No, neither had I until about three or four years ago.
I believe none of us ever heard.
Uh, nobody. I was, I was planning on it, let me tell you, because I, it's a surprise to a lot of people, what the heck is that? I've gotten plenty of phone calls. I'm surprised how many people read the legal section. So, how do, what do I do in a cat cafe? You just visit the cats. Ultimately, we would like to work with a shelter. We have a commitment from the Franklin County Sheriff's Office that shelter program that would, that would work with us to adopt. So you'd be able to adopt the cats through the shelter and then we would continue to essentially be a fostering location for cats. And I was, I was just a surprise that everybody else, and when I went to my first place, it was, uh, just really unique and I watched my kids have fun. This was down in South Carolina and they just played with the cats for an hour. We paid a certain fee to help with the process of, you know, the animal population and the community and such. And it's just a really tranquil, peaceful sort of environment. You get a cup of coffee, a snack, there's no food being prepared on the site. It's, uh, all packaged and, uh, light fare and, uh, it's a unique, it's a unique opportunity. There's nothing like this in Western Massachusetts. You have to go to Eastern Mass. You can visit the Kitty Cat Cafe in Peabody, that's the closest one. Worked, I've been speaking with Yuri. Worked, I've been speaking with, uh, Yuri, um, Alan. He is, uh, in charge of that facility and, uh, he's, he's given me a lot of great information on, on, you know, following up and how to, how to put this thing together. This is, uh, phase one. Getting the town to say, okay, we'll do that because it is, like I said, very unique. Anything from here, if you're not going to Eastern Mass, you got to go into Connecticut. So this would open stuff up to people coming from potentially rural North Hampton. And I know that sounds crazy. Who's gonna go do it? But they said the same thing when a butterfly museum went in. You know, who's gonna go see them? People do it. I'm telling, it's a trending kind of thing. It's a, it's cat cafe, cat lounge. And, uh, as soon as you Google it, they'll pop right up and show you.
Dot TV?
Sure it is.
Okay, um, so I want to guide you a little bit to more, some more details. The first thing is that this is a category that's not in the zoning.
Yeah.
So that means that we need to kind of peel back the onion a little bit, get into the weeds a little bit, so that when we approve it, we're sure what we're approving. So if it's not just a general, if it was a general category, we'd feel more comfortable.
Understood.
So if I understand this, there's two parcels. One is there's a source of cats, which might be shelters and things of that nature, right?
Primarily shelters. We want to make-
Or the other sources.
These people, we want to make sure the cats are coming in vetted. So you're not just taking cats in off the street. Somebody says, I got a cat for you and I just bring it in the general population. This is a-
Okay, so you, so you, the standard, the floor, the standard for you is that these cats come in from a place like a shelter or other-
Right.
But is there anything, if we were to condition this on you having a relationship with a shelter?
Yes.
We wouldn't want necessarily limit you if there are similar things with different names that you could explain to us that you would go to to get cats. Who were vetted is what you're saying?
Hundred percent. Right. I mean, you could get it. I suppose you could bring in your, you could bring in a cat if it had been, uh, checked out by a veterinarian. Uh, we want to make sure that the place-
So I could bring a cat to you too from my house if I-
No, we don't. The idea isn't you bring cats into us to, to spend time in this, uh, facility with your cat. No. The cats, the cats are already there. They, um, they would be ideally cats from, Franklin County Animal Shelter has written us a commitment letter. And I've got brought copies of those. So ideally, that's who we want to work with.
If we were to say that that was your sole source of cats right now, would that be, would that restrict you or would that be okay?
It would restrict us. Yeah, we would like to work with other shelters. We don't want to just have one.
Okay, I wasn't-
No, we would like to work with other shelters.
But shelter is a word that we could use? That would be the condition?
You can put, you can put any condition on this that you feel comfortable with. That's where we're at right now. Like this, the Franklin County Shelter cannot give us cats today. As you well, probably well know, they're going through their own process of the, uh, uh, opening a new facility in South Deerfield. Okay, so they have a facility, if you're not aware of that, they have a facility in Turner's Falls. They've overgrown this. They'd like to open a new facility. Purchased a piece of land in South Deerfield a year ago. They are going through the zoning for that now. There's people that have concerns and they're bringing their concerns to the table and they're being heard. And that has actually happened tonight, right now, right now. So-
That's fine. That's great.
If that goes through, great. We want to work with them. They'd be the most local, but they're one.
They're a shelter.
They are a shelter.
And there might be other shelters.
There might be other shelters.
Mean to me that certain things happen at the shelter.
Yep.
That are important to us and-
Correct. That is correct.
All right, so it sounds like shelters is the-
If you want to say shelters, uh, that's great. If otherwise, uh, vetted by a, a veterinarian, that would help too. So to get it, to get it started, if we don't have these guys to get a couple of cats from, we would be able to then maybe go through.
You mean the vets would have their own collection of cats or-
We could give, we would have paperwork and, and whatnot done from these, these would be vetted cats is what I'm saying.
Vetted from vets.
Yes, vetted from vets.
Can I ask a question here?
Sure.
What is the vetting process? I mean, I'm sure they need to be inoculated. Is there a minimum number of inoculations that they have to get?
And so here's the thing, I, I, I'm sure that there are, but that is not my expertise. And that is the one, that is the main reason that I would want to work with a shelter that has that kind of information. And if it's not the shelter, it would be a veterinarian. We have a, a woman on our team that owns a vet, uh, Greenfield Veterinary Clinic. So we would make sure that they're, they're, they're here. I've got a whole team of people. This isn't just my project. Okay? I happen to own the building, but this has been an ongoing, uh, concept here in this area for several years by a group of people. And I'm just happened to catch it at the right time where I have a space open in the building that I own and I said, uh, offered it to, yes.
Organization running this? I mean, you're the building owner.
Yes. We haven't, we don't even have a, we don't have a business name or a, a business yet. We're waiting for permission from-
But I think, I, I understand that, but you know, if you're going to vet the cats and the not case, I think you'd still be, the organization still be responsible to tracking those records. So that someone comes in and says, I want to look at the records, even though you may not do-
Sure, 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 sure. Yeah.
You're gonna have to understand.
I have no problem being in the, in the front of this thing and putting my name down. I have no problem with that, but I probably won't be the only one. I'm gonna drag some other people in. Yes.
I'm just concerned if we're going to condition this, we conditioning it too.
Well, we can condition to the property.
Yeah, okay, but I want to make sure that-
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Anybody used that property who, no matter who it is, through this or through this, through Cameron's, uh, he would have to be a dot that connects him.
Whoever's participating with that stipulation understands that they're legally required to keep track of moving and that's all that sort of stuff.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm sorry.
I, I just have a quick, do you have any knowledge of your own knowledge that this area is regulated by any, any, by the laws of Massachusetts? What you're doing, is it regulated?
Yes, it is.
So the statutes out there that-
There are.
What you're doing?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Governed by, um, uh, the state, absolutely.
David, can I ask a couple of questions?
Of course.
Thank you. First, if I start laughing, you're still talking about this, this seems kind of fun and silly, but it's not like ridiculing the-
No, no, I get it.
It's a novel.
I get it.
I, I will unclear, are the cats in this space twenty-four seven?
Yes.
The cats live-
They live there.
Space and if there was an impetus to adopt or whatnot, cat would be rehomed and you would work with a shelter to bring a new cat in.
Yes.
Okay. And then you're looking at being open a few days each week, eight to ten hours a day.
Yes.
What kind of hours are you, are we talking like Fridays till ten at night?
Could be.
Hours Monday through Friday? What are you thinking in terms of-
I'm thinking, I'm thinking of, uh, you know, that there's, there's work that needs to be done and, and we're finding out that there's a, there's a want for, for a ten o'clock. You know, what are we doing after dinner? You know, or after the, that we see a show at the Ox and Reed or the, or the Shae. There's, there are people that want to do things after five o'clock. And this is one of those things. So, no, I can't, I'm not going to be there after ten o'clock. I can't, I don't think anybody else will. Yes.
Cafe.
No, it's not going to be that. There's a, uh, yep, go ahead.
Um, I also just wanted to know a little more about staffing.
Yes.
So it's not like you got a key code and you just go in and hang out with the cat.
No.
When the space is open.
No.
Paid person there is-
Yes.
During the space.
Maybe, maybe not paid. Maybe not paid.
Sure, sure.
A lot of all-
Responsible affiliate.
Yes.
On site when people are entering the space to come hang out.
One of the things that is drawn to this is that my, that my business is in that building and there's, uh, other people that have businesses in that building that are interested in this and that would help us sort of keep tabs on thing and monitor and, and yeah, that, just because you're open only so many hours, there's still cleaning that needs to be done every day. And yes, yeah, the cats live there.
Okay, okay. That's helpful. Thanks, Ken.
Yeah.
So, so the twenty-four seven, ten P M would be a, a, an okay time to-
Yes.
To say, and what would be a time you'd want to open?
Well, I don't know. It's a good question. I can't.
There next door.
I, ten AM?
Seven in the morning.
Ten AM? I mean,
That's what you want.
I wouldn't think that it would be open before that.
Okay. And you're saying that'll be seven days a week?
No.
Okay, so that's your maximum time?
Yes.
And it could be that way, seven, I guess for our purposes, would you like it to be open that much? Would you like permission for it to be open that much or would you like to give us other narrower times?
You-
But we're going to put it into a permit.
Yeah, you can narrow it as, 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 as little as the, I, I would definitely want to make sure that we have at least four days like that. I, I, I don't know, uh, is we, what four days those would be, but I don't see this, this isn't going to be seven days.
No.
I can tell you that, but I, I'm not exactly sure.
Weekdays, weekends?
Weekends for sure and, uh, probably a couple of weekdays.
Well, I, I, I asked my family if they had heard of it.
Yeah.
They're, they're very popular. Very familiar with it. Do you want to?
Say?
Do you want to?
Say?
You want to restrict her? You want to restrict it to a number of days? I mean, I, I, it may not get really successful.
Well, look, if it, if this thing blows up, we're, we're, we'll be back. Like, I don't know what to say. I, 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 I have my doubts and skeptisms too, you know, but they got to pay the rent and the lights.
Okay, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
We get the idea.
We want to work, we're, we're willing to work with the city, with the state. We reached out to animal control. We have their support, with the support of the sheriff, the, herself, but the, the idea is that, uh, you know, I've reached out to, to people that own vets ops. I've reached out to people who've been rescuing animals, cats specifically here in the area for a couple of years. I've reached out to various shelters in the area and other cat cafes to sort of come up with. How do we make this work? And, and it's a, uh, it's a process that varies from town to town and, but there is definitely state oversight.
Okay, so you set this up.
Yeah.
It's got the hours. I come in.
Yep.
What happens?
Make an appointment.
Make an appointment. Is that the only one in there or they're, maybe not?
There would be-
You know who's in there.
We, we control how many people come in and how many, at, at what times. This isn't just a walk-in service.
I can find my notebook. All right, so.
So we only have-
I make an appointment. I'm in there.
Yes.
And what's happening, what's happening? What's happening with me as the person who wants to have a cat? What's happening with you?
Yeah.
Business.
Welcome, I welcome you. I see if you, you know, you, you want something to drink, please, uh, use the hand sanitizer before you're touching the cats. And then you're free to roam and play with the cats or, or, or read to them or like, there's a lot of different things that go on. I sat primarily and watched my kids get on the floor. We, we walked home with one of these things. I mean, we didn't go home with it that day, but-
So I go through that process. I like that cat.
Yes.
What happens? How do I, how do I get title to the cat? Yeah, that's it?
No, 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 you are then put in touch with whatever shelter owns that cat.
Gotcha. But you don't keep the cat until-
That's correct. That's correct. And then they have an adoption process. They, they vet you.
Okay, so this is the-
Make sure that you have a landlord that allows this. There's people out there with, they, they, their landlords don't allow. So where do they go? You'd be surprised. There's, uh, college kids that have, uh, study time during, during exams and-
I mean, there's a lot of people who want the fun of playing with the cat.
Yeah.
All responsibility to go with it.
Yes, for the cost. I mean, there's, the people are on tight end, tight budgets where there are people that have, you, you'll, you'll see. If you need to hear from people, there's, there's plenty of information out there. I'd, I'd help you.
How do you break a tie? What if two people want the same cat?
I didn't, yeah, I don't know. That's when I get out of the middle and I let the shelter deal with it. First come, first served, I think. I don't know.
Kevin, I'm looking at this kind of, it's a website plan that you've got going on here. Is this a twenty foot by thirty eight?
Yes.
Face that is open? Um, maximum number of cats in this?
And I apologize for the, the, I don't, I don't know what I'm doing when I put this stuff out. You know, I did the best that I could with very, very limited resources, no architect involved there. But how many cats?
Yeah, I mean, we're talking no more than ten.
Eight to ten, we're, we're in that range.
Yeah.
That's what we feel. It's after talking with, uh, I can tell you, you know, it's, there's a place that just opened up last Friday in Lowell. They have four cats. It's hard to operate with four cats because you can't really have too many people in there or there's, you know, you're, so we're, we're looking at a space like that and we're saying, yeah, eight to twelve. This is all part. Yeah, well, that ten is between eight and twelve. And, and a lot of that is, it is depends on, does this, when we, you know, how is this space utilized, you know, and we're not sure of that yet. Can we use this space? This is kind of where we're starting and, and we're asking you guys.
Well, you'll have health issue. I mean, the Board of Health will come in and make-
Yep, we've reached out to the Board of Health. I haven't heard back, but yes.
I haven't either.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
There's a not more from Eric.
Please.
That talks about how we, yes, but transfer memo dated February twenty-first, twenty twenty-five and the fire prevention officer with three oh five Wall Street assessors map eighty-eight lot eighteen, so common. The memo dated February twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, ensuring super channel for three oh five Wall Street assessors map eighteen. And a memo from Eric Wadler, Director of Planning and Development, dated March eighteen, twenty twenty-five, review comments proposed cat cafe lounge at three oh five Wall Street, recommendations. If the board is inclined to approve the application, the Department of Planning and Development recommends the following conditions of approval. The applicant shall provide documentation to the board that they have entered into an agreement with a cat adoption organization, a cat cafe slash lounge. The maximum number of cats allowed at the facility at the same time shall be whatever number, you know, we decide upon it. And zoning district, uh, property is three oh five Wall Street assessors map eighty-eight lot eighteen and zoning district, general industrial. The above referenced parcel is located with the general industrial zoning board, puts to the zoning district. Properties to the north, south and east are also zoned. General industrial properties to the west are zoned urban residential use. Property use cat cafe lounge is a use not classified in Greenfield zoning ordinance, so it has been classified as a use not elsewhere classified, which is, which is use allowed by special permit with site plan review and approval from the zoning board of appeals within all zoning districts. Days and hours of operation applicant has stated in the submitted application materials that the facility would be limited to a few days each week for eight to ten hours per day. Appointments shall be required for visitors to allow for adequate circulation within the facility. The board shall inquire what days of the week the facility should be open and what hours during, during those days. Boarding of cats, the board should inquire if the cats will be housed at the proposed facility and will they be brought into a daily basis? And if so, what times would such transfer of the cats be made? The board should also inquire on how many cats at one time will be in the facility. The submitted interior layout of the space for the cats cafe lounge does not show where the cats would be housed overnight. Off street, excuse me, parking, off street parking requirements are not specified for this use of the zoning ordinance. The planning, the board should inquire on the number of parking spaces dedicated for both employees of the facility and patrons to ensure that parking will not be an issue. The submitted site plan shows six off-street parking spaces dedicated for the facility to include one ADA space. Dimensional requirements slash setbacks. No exterior improvements are proposed for this project. Lighting, there are existing light poles, parking areas, no light poles are being proposed and then signage. The maximum square footage of a wall sign within the general industrial district is forty-five square feet. Anything, any proposed signage above and beyond the maximum requirements of the zoning ordinance shall require a special permit for the zoning board of appeals. That's it.
Um, the question about whether, are the cats going to be housed there?
Yeah.
So overnight, is somebody going to be with them?
No. No, they live there. I, I talked to me, I said the same thing. I said, a, a, and the idea is when you, when you visit one of these places, you understand that that's, I mean, this is-
Will they, will-
Finish your sentence.
No, it's, it's an ideal situation. These guys are in paradise. We create a utopia for cats. And you come in and share that with them during certain hours. When you leave, they got the place to themselves. I mean, we, we do monitor it by camera, uh, that for, you know.
Shelter cats would be left alone overnight, shot.
Oh, yeah. They're in cages too. I mean, these, these-
Are these cats in cages?
No.
But I guess the question, if, if they're going to be roaming around, is there furniture or anything that they can get on and create a problem with the furniture?
No, nothing fabric. I mean, there's, like I said, that there are state guidelines that you have to get, anything, everything has to be watched so often and yes, that's to be washable.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, one is, what, what's your contingency plan for illness, should any of the cats get sick?
Yeah, that's the one. One of the things is there are containment rooms for animals that, that are ill. Uh, having that as part of your, your plan is, is, is ideal. I think, uh, having a shelter that takes the cat back and once that is recognized, they have to vet these animals. Once they drop off a, uh, an animal by state rate, they have state regulations to be, uh, rescue or shelter. And they have to abide by those through the state. They have to make sure that their animals are, they can't just drop them off and say, good luck having that one adopted and forget about it. It's not done.
Still fair response.
Fair response.
Still fair responsibility.
Responsibility.
Even though it's staying here.
Yes.
So if it was, if there was a brawling incident, if cat was not doing well with it.
Yes. We contain it.
To take that.
We contain it, that, that, yes.
Yes. Got it.
Yes, some of these places are actually covering the cost of caring for the cat too. I mean, depending upon the, the, the kitty cat cafe, which is, we were talking about one they have, it's eight, is a fifty, fifteen years old. It requires eight hundred dollars a month in medication and they cover that as part of, yeah.
Where's the containment room on here?
Yeah, we're not a hundred percent sure. We, we don't have it marked in here and it may not be in this location. There's other parts of the building that we could use. We're waiting to talk to the state about that.
But we could, we could condition that, that you will provide.
Hundred percent. Yeah, we're, we're here to, we're here to do what you tell us. You know, what do you, what do you allow? What, what are the restrictions? And we, we work within those. We want to be compliant. We want to be, uh, like I said, we reached out to animal control, board of health and, uh, getting town approval is the first, first hurdle.
So in your agreement with the, uh, shelters, do these cats that come in there, have they been, will they have been neutered?
Uh, my understanding is that they all, yes, when they shelter an animal, right? Spade or neuter. Bob Barker's, good idea.
One more question. Who knew there was gonna be so many questions?
I did.
Cat cafe.
I did.
You know, actually, this isn't a question so much about the cafe and more just the property. I'm just, for me, it kind of matters that the other side of the street is a residential zone and it doesn't sound like a raucous, rowdy business.
Yeah.
But I am thinking about the hours and I am wondering like what, what are the hours of the hair place next door? How late does the hair place stay open? Is there anything else beyond Camelot Cleaners? The brewery is in this.
Or Phantoms, yeah.
And how late are they open till?
Not, not as late as the cat cafe. The cat cafe closes for.
Close for.
Yeah.
Are they open till like?
I don't know. I'm not that late.
Yes.
And I don't think that they're open past ten. They are, uh, my, you know, it's a local brewery that they have, uh, they have people come in and I have been by there. It's, I, it's not late.
Yeah.
I can find that out for you.
No, no, no. It's.
You know, five, six o'clock, the salon closes.
Yeah.
From Camelot split around three o'clock on.
Good for us.
Yes.
What, what do you charge the people who are coming into the cats?
A great question. We, we've, we've been to places as little as ten dollars and places as much as twenty five for fifty minutes for an hour. And we're probably gonna be in the fifteen, sixteen dollar range.
Fine.
I, I don't know. People are coming up with that, but they, they do. I mean, I paid it, it took my, I don't know.
It's totally not, it's anything I, as a zoning, uh, as CBA. But with twenty dollars, you don't have to give anybody four dollars in change.
I know, I know. You can have something to buy a coffee with. I guess. Need support for twenty.
Okay, any questions, any members? I'll, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody in the public want to speak? Yes.
You know, when the ribbon cutting is on.
Okay, okay.
Anybody else? Yes, from the recorder.
Yeah. I'm, I'm Adam. I've been to plenty of cat cafes before.
Oh.
Fun.
Yeah.
One of my questions is, is a lot of things I've been to, there's restrictions on food in with the cats.
Yes.
Would that be something you consider restricting the food and drinking with the cats? Or would you want people to be able to go in and out of that location with food and drink?
We would, we would open it up. We would love to have, the, the, it was a great question and we, uh, we just found out at Peabody here this morning that they do bring it in. They have people who pull up with Grubhub and, uh, and have food dropped off. We would love to take advantage of the possibility of a, a food truck on the weekends. I know that Lefty's Brewery was, when they used this space as a tap room, they would have a food truck out front. And if we had busy hours where people are scheduled to be in there all afternoon, love to local, work with a local company to show up and, and have a food truck out front. I don't know, that's a whole nother probably ball of wax, but we're not preparing, we're not preparing any food. Anything that we plan on carrying is gonna be light fare that's provided by, uh, local bakeries and, and whatnot, prepackaged.
Drinks would be light, prepackaged drinks.
Yeah, a soda, uh, you know, iced tea and that would all be prepackaged, yeah.
Anybody else? Yes.
So I'm Kelly Carter. Um, I work at the salon next door. I've rented from Cameron for a couple of years.
Um, where do you live?
I live in South Deerfield. I should be at the meeting for the, the dog shelter, but this is very important. And so a group of us have been thinking about this for like three years. Um, Cameron came back from South Carolina and kind of busted down on our idea. But we're all working together on this project. Um, I'm in connection with people in the library, a lot of local crafters, farmers, um, people that have been so excited about something like this, a place to go, a meeting room, a place to have birthdays, um, elderly population, people can't have pets. You know, kids' parents can't afford them, you know, place to go, people that live in apartments. Um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of need for this, um, just a place to gather. Since COVID, people haven't come out. The senior center's not for everybody. Um, knitting groups, possibly yoga, um, talking to the lady from the library tonight, Lisa Pearlman, um, there's no place for a silent reading group. Um, a lot of different things that we could offer there for the community. So as far as hours, some days I start cutting hair at six AM. Um, I'm getting old. I really don't want to be working till nine or ten o'clock at night anymore, but, um, you know, some nights I'm there till eight or eight thirty. So it depends on the night. Um, we're there, uh, it depends what the need of the community is for this. You know, talking to a couple, a couple of different people, you know, you want it when the cats are active. Um, daytime, but weekends, but talking to people at night, there's nothing to do after you leave the shade or a movie, um, unless you go to a bar. You know, there's really no place that you can get a great cup of coffee and a really good pastry. So, you know, that's what we want to do is have a place to be playing out and, uh, something fun and positive. That's not, you know, you know, I play a game, hang out. You know, where can your family go if you live in Brattleboro and half your family's in Springfield? A place to meet. You know, apartments, you can't fit your family members in there for a birthday party. You know, come and have a cake, hang out with the cats.
Yeah.
Just a place to be. You know, I have kids that already grown, but the birthday party there. Um, I want to throw client that's gonna turn a hundred in July. I want to have her birthday party there. So there's, there's a lot of things that I think would be really great for the community. My friend Cindy, um, she owns Springfield Veterinary Clinic. Um, and she rescues cats. You know, there's a bunch of people here that really support us and people that want to be on board to volunteer. So we've really been working at this, so.
Do you want to speak, anybody?
Anybody now?
Okay. Everybody who's spoken, yes, ma'am. Identify yourself, please.
Suzanne, I'm here, but.
We're here.
My husband and Cameron own the building together.
Yeah.
I lived in South Carolina and been to cat cafes and it's an awesome experience. People love to go in there. Adults just sit, kids play, the cats run around, they'll come and sit in your lap or next to you. It's, um, it's great. I'm ready to volunteer and keep it clean and be there when people come. So it's, it's an awesome idea.
Thank you. All right, um, so we're, same thing I said to the.
Yep.
Those, and I think we should stick around because I think there might be questions as we deliver.
Sure thing.
Are there people here that you think are, that will help answer?
Yes, they are. And, uh, this is a, I, I, I've got a couple of different items I'll leave with you. This is a commitment letter from the sheriff, self, the Franklin County Shelter and, and their plans to work with us. This is a, a, a proposal for, uh, insurance for the, for the business.
Oh, those are good.
These are five pages, so I only printed out one that, that.
Oh, I was finished.
But there's, there's a copy of the, uh, the commitment letter from the sheriff's.
On our charts, they, a lot of those, that's covered by scrap coverage.
Have you ever?
It has been researched, so just.
Yeah. Bite, bite and scratch, uh, covers is important in this industry.
Yeah, that was gonna be a condition.
Yeah. You got it, okay?
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Yep.
Uh, you want to take a five minute break? The attendant, we're doing pretty well. All right, maybe let's pick a time. Seven forty. Reconnoiter.
Yeah, we, we wonder about that, it's, uh,
Thanks Suzanne. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
And they would, it's so benefit from places like that.
Correct.
They can just kind of hang out.
It's pretty sad. I've never had a cat like, like, look at me. Before. And I'm like, I want to go get that cat.
Yeah.
Maybe a cat. Right.
My, my cat grew up was like the thing I said like, yeah, I didn't know. It is over age. It became a special.
You know.
Yeah, it's like some cats come around really well. Some people, we have to be.
I mean, some of these are gonna be good or not, you know, like the ones today, they all go rogue.
Yeah.
And there was enough space for them and like, you know, had one that could just come in and there's a way for them to section and stuff, but like,
yeah.
If you have some that's like there all the time, that can then associate that like are there and they're guaranteed to kind of move there.
Right.
Like.
Yeah.
Whether they're littermates or not, I think it would be.
Right, well, somebody, thank you. Other two. Yeah. Anyway.
Is it, is it good? It's the same, giving me the, the optimistic at me. Okay, yeah, I know, so, yeah. But I got it, I hear. Solvers, uh, yeah. You got it down, right? Ready, go. All right.
Just gonna, sort of, just actually. Listening to numbers for him.
He searches a bet.
There were.
I guess this is interesting.
San Antonio racetracks.
It's gonna.
I, um.
Anyway. They have, uh. Your name's on this, so are you, are you the person looking for this permit?
Potential. Cameron had jumped on board originally, I was, but I dropped the insurance agent. So it's either gonna be Cameron or I that's kind of applying for the permit.
What's that, twelve dollars?
Together. I'm not sure how it will be. I mean, it was my insurance agent and stuff, so she. That's, yeah. I mean, I work in doors, so somebody hours can be like, I'm kind of in contact with all the volunteers and people that have really been working on this project. Cindy only.
It feels a little, I, I would love to have somebody, they claim to the responsibility, come, me be responsible. Person.
Correct.
That we can talk to, that we remind them that this is what's happened at the.
It's kind of like, I kind of stepped away because it was.
It doesn't have to be you, but I need someone.
Yeah, so either he or I will.
Well, then when we get to the point of talking about.
Yeah. I mean, probably will be him, he's for you. I just want to be responsible for making changes to the building or if there had to be any major construction stuff. And it was like open because of his cleaning business, to be able to have a corner. Yeah. You know, there's some people passing around like, let's see their safe. Um, they're sitting in the middle, that baby over there.
You did, but you have, you, you decided to.
Ideally, unless you guys tell us.
Space that's being.
So we couldn't, we couldn't, yeah, it's a constantly, you know, so.
It's not only to waste your time.
No, no, I mean, that's ideally. No, it's basically, I mean. It's here.
It's, we have some, a couple of things that. Our job is, you know, I don't really think it's cool.
Yeah, no, but like for, I mean, we've just talked about it for a while, just an idea. I want you guys to know that, that like, you know, we've really been talking to like other people that have involved, like westerns. You know, volunteers, community lines agents, post rank agents, just sort of all of the things. Ideally, like I want cats that are building there all the time, people guaranteed that they can establish a relationship that we bet there are, that not a. Right? Yeah, if you have any questions.
I thought it was seven thirty five and I was.
No, we're back.
It's seven thirty seven, thirty eight. I don't, I didn't quite hear beside what you said. Cause I need one more.
Seven forty, I said.
Forty, okay, you got two minutes. Two minute one.
Kind of boiling.
It is.
Um. All right. Wait, wait, wait. Next time I'll give you seven minutes. It's Jones. But, but they're there, right? Now I'm gonna start.
Yeah, we're close now.
Dear singer. I just wanted to let you know there's a comment typed in the chat that maybe want to be read for the record on the cat lounge.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Stefan.
Just I can figure out how to see it.
Yeah, I don't. Something I need to read into the.
That's.
We'll see, yeah, that's probably.
Oh, I'll read those.
You would have to read it, but how you got to say you get to.
Oh, okay, so all right, I think I've seen the message here. Um, I don't know if I see the full message. Oh, here we go. Um.
Is it okay if she reads in?
Oh, yeah.
Um, this is from Casey. I don't know where Casey is from. Uh, Casey's still here?
Her last name?
No, it just says Casey.
Casey, we don't know where she's from?
No, um, it says brewery usually, uh, brewery open usually until, um, nine. I'm a residential neighbor. As a residential neighbor, knowing he's working with a shelter, uh, that was my primary concern. Excited to have a cat lounge. We have our own cats and have visited cat lounges and they are wonderful, they are fun, wonderful spaces.
Oh, nice.
This is a neighbor, a residential neighbor. I don't know how close.
And you know, who am I, who am I to say that they're not? And so I think that's what I think in terms of how to set this up. If you think it's too many, if you think there's something that I missed. But that's basically, the general scope is, that'd be healthy out there. And then these other things, they're not really kind of coming in from the left field to open up a business. They're really just, you know, these are their pets.
The animals have been on site for almost two years.
Yeah, right.
And their first visit with anyone with a concern about the animals was due to somebody, the control officer happened to be in the area for something else. I, I think that speaks a lot, you know, the last one, there were some concerns that had been reported prior to coming in for the special permit, where this one, it doesn't appear that anyone's had any concerns enough that it's been reported anywhere. So to me, that speaks if the animals are doing well. I was there, nobody was home, so I didn't go past the driveway. I just didn't feel comfortable just walking across your yard and everything where nobody was there. But I didn't, you know, it was a lovely day, there was a light breeze, I didn't smell anything.
But I think the animal control officer and the board of health should have jurisdiction over this, over this special permit. You know, not the building inspector, because it's not, it's not bad, so.
All right, is David, is there, is there any concern about these outbuildings that have been put up? And whether the building inspector would have approved those?
I don't know.
Did you consult with the building inspector?
They only put up a lead to, right?
When we bought the property, the only thing we added was, we made a shelter out of pallets for them to go in when they're in the field. But everything else was already there when we bought the property.
Pretty temporary.
It's like a.
That's just, yeah.
I, I don't, I don't know why.
Okay, was there certain structures based on size that don't need a building permit? I'm not saying these or that, but you can build a lead to, you can build certain structures that are a certain square foot without having that. I don't have to get like, is that okay?
Okay, I didn't know the, I didn't know the exact nature of the structures, but
I mean, we could give.
Temporary structures than building permit.
We can give the building inspector, always has jurisdiction over his things anyway, you know what I mean? I'm not, and I didn't see anything there that looked like really, it didn't look like construction to me. It just looked like, like you'd build a doghouse or you'd build a coop, I don't know. It wasn't, it wasn't that sophisticated.
And the building inspector did see this application. Again, right, did anything in the comment, if they didn't comment or they didn't say anything.
Okay, so go ahead.
I think this might have been implicit in what you were saying, which I completely agree with. But I do think just limiting to the current number of animals, not just no breeding, but no acquisition of further livestock beyond.
These, even better, these animals, they cannot be substituted without coming back for a special.
Right, and then like we've done a few times with larger number of dogs on a lot, I kind of like to see the permit, go to the Rosenbergs, not be attached to the deed in perpetuity.
Yep, that's right.
Yeah, so those would be my two.
Anybody else? All right, so can I read them so somebody could take a, make a list, or is it just, this is my list?
You can read them, and I'm happy to make a list for you, but don't go so fast that I can't keep up.
Okay, so number one, this is a personal permit that goes with the Rosenbergs, but it does not run with the land. And it won't run if they lease the property, it's just them. And their survivor. Uh, these, these animals only, so the list of animals on the map, plus the location of the animals, the area is per the application.
Before you finish that first head, why did you add, and their survivor?
Well, because if there's, if one of them still survives.
Oh, if one of them, no, but not.
No, not theirs, not their, the survivor of them.
All right, example, as listed in the application, and I got.
Yeah, the, so the animals listed in the application and the design of the area where the animals would be kept. So this, this special permit will be under the jurisdiction of the animal control officer, the board of health and the building inspector as their interests are involved in this matter. No breeding. I don't know. Oh my God.
We've limited the specific animals that are there.
Yeah, there'd be, it's. So if you, if, if there is breeding and another animal comes around, that animal's going to be asked to leave politely.
They're all fixed.
All right, well, I hear you, I hear you. Miracles happen. All right, uh, knows, this will not be a zoo. A petting zoo of any kind, or a petting farm.
So I had written earlier, personally use only, no business involving the animals.
Now, is that for? I mean, because if I come to pet the animals and I'm not paying for it, then I don't.
Okay, so you're, you're, you're saying that it's not a petting zoo, like the fact that they were charged for that?
Correct.
People coming in and visiting.
So you could put like IE, it's not, it can't be a zoo, it can't be a petting farm, it can't be animal therapy. Those are examples of things that are, that we consider businesses, and we would say no, if we heard that that was going. But I, I don't know how to say this in a way that's not imposing, but it's important for health and safety. The veterinarian, you know, how do we get the, I guess, I can't make them bring vets to the property, can we? Is that?
Just provide appropriate healthcare.
Appropriate healthcare and waste removal, how's that?
Appropriate animal care.
And waste removal. Let's just want to make that a separate.
I was just gonna say, including veterinary visits. Do you want to add that, that the proper care isn't just their caring for them, but they do need to do the vets, or we just could say proper, appropriate animal care? I, I just don't know how specific we need to get.
Including but not limited to, I mean, I don't, do people feel like we're in a position?
Well, what would happen if you had farmed animals on six acres? What would the standards be for?
I was thinking that when we came here.
Yeah, okay, you know, but.
I mean, it's about space and not about, you have livestock, like that.
No, that's a fair, that's a fair comment.
And I want to incorporate the, the whole application and all the comments by those town officials, and the comments from concerned citizens into the rec, into the special permit.
I, I, is, are you saying a comment or am I?
I wanted, at the end, I want to incorporate every, the application, the map, it's, it's in the decision so that, that's, that's the representations that we don't take, we don't put people on their oath. So we, the, the application is part and parcel of why we're making this decision. Does that make sense? Is that what I've done before, or maybe I'm saying it differently? I have to say it differently, the way I did. I usually just incorporate the application so that, remember, so we don't have, we know that if there was something that wasn't right, accusing anybody of anything, but if it was off from the application, those representations, we're basing this on representations made in the application. And I think that's enough. And the, and the site plan, I think we, and the stuff, you know, the, the comments of the people, it went too far.
Yeah, the comments is where we started, okay, so.
Sounded good, but.
This should be appropriate to have a condition that the fence be maintained.
Yes.
So that the animals.
Yes.
Cannot escape.
Yes.
Or do not escape.
Yes.
Design of animals was as listed in.
Now, can we ask a question procedurally? When we, when we go to sign the appeals, usually we're getting it, we, we condition it that everything is based on the drawings or whatever it is. Aren't those part of the record that they, we don't, we don't hit, when we're getting it, we're not looking at that.
Correct, correct.
That this, all this is part of the record.
They'll, they'll, there are other situations where we would want to attach everything to the record because it would be that type of thing. I don't think, I think here, the record is pretty straightforward, it's a map and it's a presentation, yeah. Yes, so we can, it's in, it's in Eric's file, but it doesn't have to be in the, I mean, I guess if we wanted to attach this to recording registry, we could. That's about it, because that'll show the next, but it's a personal, you know, it's a personal permit, so it's not really. Okay, so you want to, you want to read them?
Yes, um, so I actually added that last part to one of the statements we already had. So this is a personal permit that runs with Bill and Billy Rosenberg and not the land, is not transferable to any lease of the property.
Not transferable, Peter.
Not transferable. The permit is for these animals as listed in the application, and the design of the animal enclosures as, as shown in the application.
Yes. Size and location.
Design. The animal control officer, board of health and building inspectors will have, you know.
Have jurisdiction. Jurisdiction over the special permit. And the enforcement of the special permit, has a, the enforcement of the special permit.
Uh, this is for personal use only, i.e. no petting zoo, animal therapy, et cetera, are not allowed. Provide appropriate animal care and waste removal. That's.
Fence. Incorporate by incorporating this stuff to the.
Well, that's why I wrote it, the, the animals as listed in the application and the design of the animal enclosures as listed, as for drawing supplied with application.
And then Eric had the last one, that's the fence would be maintained, the way it is now, or better, the same condition or better. Or.
I think what Debbie's saying is that the map kind of.
Oh, you think that?
It doesn't list the heights, so do we want us?
Yeah, that has, yeah.
Well, that, yeah, that's why I say so the, so the animals wouldn't escape, because farm, with farm animals, once they get in the habit of getting out to a hole in the fence or whatever, they're going to keep going.
I would hope the animal enforcement officer would put this on the top of the pile and go right over there and look at everything. And make sure that we've done our job properly, so.
I don't want the neighbors calling up and saying, oh, they came to eat my garden.
Right.
I'd like to confirm with the, with the Rosenbergs that the fence, fencing is all currently six feet.
Sure.
If I can put that in here.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
As you maintained, um, and. And be. Six feet. I gotta come up with better ways, so it's fencing to be main, to be maintained or approved, but we're made of.
In the same condition or better. As of the date of the application. Thank you, Dave. Everybody heard that? So we'll take a vote. All in favor, by name, say how you vote.
Peter, what was the, aye.
Debbie Jocks, aye.
Mark Maloney, aye.
Or Green, aye.
David Singer, aye. Congratulations. You're welcome. So the way this works is people have, we file it with the city clerk. People have 20 days, there are people that could appeal this, they have 20 days, 20 days from the filing to appeal it. Once that 20 day period has gone by, the clerk will issue a certificate that says nobody has appealed it. Hopefully that will be mailed to you, and that will be your firm evidence that, and given the permit, that it's beyond any appeal period. So good luck. Nice to meet you both.
Wait, everyone's leaving?
Thank you so much. Good luck.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
I hear you.
Thank you.
Kennedy, cheers.
Nice to meet you.
Cheers. Good luck.
What happens?
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
You bet.
Now, it's not so simple. Not good a member for a start, so not least that as a board member, they'll get the vote.
Property that didn't make any.
Happen to you. Well, you're right, you're on mine.
I'm like stopping, I'm looking.
Mine. That was the first one. Just covering, no, no. Peter, what's going on?
You might, I'm gonna check it there anyway. It's my official route of the board. It's okay, it's just, it's like, hey, you might want to let me know.
Guys, guys. It's okay, let's just get done.
Get off.
Okay, um, somebody read the motion to approve the special permit and please say with condition.
I'd like to make a.
Following conditions.
I'd like a motion to approve the application of Cameron Ward for property located 305 Wall Street, assessors map AD Inc., lot 18, which is located in the general industrial GI zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections 200-8.3, 200-8.4, and appendix A tables of use of the zoning ordinance in order to allow a cat cafe lounge at this location with following conditions.
I'll second the motions.
Thank you. All right, discussion.
I really like the idea, I, I have two cats of my own, but the idea of going and playing with somebody else's cat for just a little bit, I'd pay 20 bucks. But one of my cats doesn't know that for me, but, you know.
I have a general feeling from this board that we all like the idea.
Yes.
So that, but we're not out of the woods. Well, number one, this is a use that's not designated, so we have to kind of, you know, at least try to attach what we're doing to how we generally deal with special permits. I mean, will this use change the character of the neighborhood? I don't, it will not, it's in a, it's in a perfect zone for it, it's in a perfect spot for it. But I have concerns about just, I think Eric tried to, to give us direction. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start off with the negative and we'll move to the positive. I don't feel totally comfortable that you don't have this set up completely with the shelters. If you had come in and said, I have this, here's my, here's what we're doing. We've got this, this, this and this. It would make me feel better, but, but then I think, well, you know, is that what we ask of other businesses? So I don't want to do it differently, it's just that, I just have some worries about, like, what are, what's our role in this, you know, what's, what's our role in this? What are we supposed to be concerned about? I want to make sure the cats, I want to make sure there's, that's a healthy place, because there's animals in there and there's people coming in contact with animals. Um, I want to make sure there's insurance so that there's, people are held accountable. Again, we didn't get any help from our city as to what we have, so there has to, they're, you're, they're going to be under the jurisdiction of, you know, the same thing as the last one, under the jurisdiction of the building inspector and the animal enforcement, what's it called, the animal? I promise I'll let you, I promise. And, uh, you know, do we need to say it's by appointment only? Do we need to say, you know, how the, how the behind the scenes works? I don't know. You know, I, I just don't know, I feel like there's some regulatory theme here that's important for us to understand, and I don't feel I have a total grasp of it.
I, I think, Cameron?
Yes.
He had mentioned that there was some statute or regulation from the Commonwealth that defines how it gets done.
Right, but we don't know it, it wasn't presented to us tonight that we could read it.
But I mean, I mean, we can require that, you know, you, is it possible to look this up on? I mean, again, I think you're saying that that's going to comply, but like I stated, that we need to know that. And I feel, I'd also want to know if you're going to be the responsible party, that you're.
Well, we're going to make him the responsible party, because, no, I'm serious, because he, because he asked for it, and we'll make, we'll give him, he'll be the responsible part.
Well, I mean, when we do, when we do, you know, any, any of the things that do with the marijuana stuff, we don't know all those rules and regulations, but part of our current process is saying that you must follow all of those rules and regulations.
Right, but there's a commission that already looks at it, I mean, they've been vetted like five times before they come to us. This is, again, I love the idea, don't get me wrong, put that over here. But the question is just how far to go with, you know, we, we get to this place, and we've talked about it before, where it's like, oh, you know, let's just give the permit, and then we don't, are not really regulating it properly, and I want to make sure we're regulating it properly, that's all.
Ask a question, can we tell them here's what we want and come back with?
Absolutely, we have 90 days to make this decision.
Yeah, I think we should do that, and define all the things that we're not comfortable with. And show us, you know, show us the regulations, the, you know, pet care and that kind of stuff, you know, have a, have a follow up.
Well, I, I'm glad for the letter, it's not signed, it's not dated. It's a good start, but that, that's what I'd like to do. We have 90 days from closing the hearing to make a decision, and we could, they could even agree to keep the hearing open, and we could, they could come back and testify. Now, we have, we have a matter on for the next two months that I'd like to keep, it's, it's one, it's one hearing, it's on the cell tower. So would you be okay coming back in June?
Yes.
Okay.
If I, if you.
Now I can, yes, please.
So I get, I mean, there's, what? Like, this hasn't been done before, you don't, we don't know, it's, your business comes before you and you've asked questions, or what are you asking us? We didn't know either.
Right.
And the truth of the matter is, that we're just willing to work with whatever boundaries are being set, like, that's it.
Yeah, we're.
And even if we just get started with no adoption, we're okay with that, like, we can't adopt it, we, we, if we start with animals that have been vetted at local veterinary, and just have open community time to them, but you cannot adopt these animals, that's, that's just a lounge, that's, there's no adoption to that. We would ultimately want to be able to help the community and the pet population by making them adopt, that may, open them up to adoption. And the only way we want to be able to do that is through working with shelters. This shelter here with the Franklin County's office is not, they're not set up and ready to go yet. But we also didn't know that we should be coming in here with that.
That's what.
I didn't realize that we should be coming in here with, talking to animal control or board of health, so we reached out to them on relatively short notice, and like I said, we did hear from animal control and, and their support. But we know we're going to need to work with the board of health, we know that we're going to need to work with the, with the state, and we've got people that will advise us with that.
Okay, so I, again, you have a, you know, there are certain business things you're going to do, have a parties for your friends or for people that are your customers, that's, that's on you guys, that's, that's great ideas and we're really happy that you're so creative. I am, I'm really, that's, 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 that's wonderful.
Yes.
We try to, you know, but, but the things I'm talking about, I don't think we have, so the state regulations and laws, I'd like to myself, see what they are, I'd like to talk to the animal enforcement officer in Greenfield and just find out what that person thinks of this. Again, I'm hopeful that there'd be, that the person will be encouraging, but say, there's, there's a list of things to do. And then I'd like to see, I'd like to, I'd like you to dig deeper about when you start off, who you're going to make commitments to for, for where the cats will come. So if you think it's going to be vets, then tell us next time it's going to be vets. Hopefully you'll have some vets lined up, shelters lined up. I want to know that I can talk to the shelters and the vets and know that, that coming back, that they're involved as well. You know, that, that they've made a commitment as well to this process, since it's so new. You know, once you get off the ground, we'll never see you again, and that's good. But to get off the ground, I feel like it's our duty to, 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 to at least do some good thinking about it. So I don't think we're ready, so I, if you let the hearing be open, then I'll let you testify and bring stuff back in, in the June meeting, and if you agree to that, and that's where we'll leave it. So these, I, I, I will send you at some point, is that okay if I'm, if I'm empowered to do that? I'll send to, with Eric, something that's specific. In, related to what I just said, I'll put it in writing.
Got it.
And are there other things you'd like, other, tell me some things if you, if they come to mind that I haven't mentioned, that.
One from Leslie after their meeting tonight in Deerfield, as well as what.
Yeah, to make sure that has, that has been given.
They are key, they don't have cats right now in Turner's, they don't have room in the facility, and they won't have anywhere to move the cats if they do get approved for this, so.
We would be helping them as much as they would be helping.
Oh, I totally get that, totally.
And that's why they are, we, we don't want to commit to, to many others for.
That's fine, at least, you know, give me one, give me vets, and people who are really in, you know, you could work with them, good place to start, right? If you want to do 10, if you think that's good, give us 10, if you think one is what you do, then, but at least I can talk to somebody and find out what the plan is, and then we can see whether we're, we should stick our noses in or not.
And one of the things that came up during our discussion was, you know, if an animal does get sick and they need to contain it on site, as opposed to going back to the shelter or to the vet, you know, because sometimes cats just get, you know, sick and they just need to be isolated. If we could have, if we have the drawing updated, I know you did the best you could for that, but if we could have the drawing, you know, just updated.
Yeah, or that it's, will be outside of the space.
Or a statement where it would be, yeah, just some.
Where, 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 where was something, where that space is on earth, and how you tend to move this cat from there. Now, what if you have a wildcat also, a cat that's not very friendly, what about, can you give a?
Yeah, we don't want those.
Make it interviewed?
They do, they absolutely do.
Okay, fair enough.
You don't want a cat that's going to be aggressive, they all have their own personality.
You know better, you know.
They're going to be harder to adopt anyway.
Imagine it'd be like when you bring a dog into a hospital, whatever, the dog has to go through certain, you know, personality tests, and, you know, making sure they're, you know, they're healthy and all that kind of stuff.
I'm curious, how far do we go as a board in spelling out requirements for things like business hours, fees?
Yes, we could do that, not fees, but we could do business hours.
This is kind of what I was, I was unsure of, I just thought of it for zoning, like, this area, zone, is this okay to do here? Like, the, all of the other particulars that help board of health, board of health be involved, the statute of the state, they must know state regulations, we, we do, we've looked them up, we know what agency we'll be working with, but we didn't think that you guys would. I, I didn't come prepared, because I didn't.
I mean, we don't want to be limited on hours, we don't have to be a.
I would, I would feel more comfortable if I saw more, more of the details that we've asked questions about, and spelled out, not necessarily to tie you to those as conditions yet, but just so that we get a sense of, all right, here's a good viable business plan, and this is how it's going to work. Because I, I don't.
I think you're right, I think a business plan that includes the things that we're talking about would be really helpful for us.
You got it.
We play, we, we could see ourselves playing a, a narrow part in the process, but we don't like to see that because if we were to just play a narrow part, then, and we gave the permit, and we didn't really connect with other departments that really needed to connect with this process, and it really, we weren't really, even though technically it's not our jurisdiction to be in that space, we, I think we're in a position in the center of the wheel here, where we kind of see everything that's going on, and we like to make sure that all the different groups know what's going on. When we issue a permit, we want to know that these people are, know that that permit's being issued. And then we're out of it, we don't enforce it unless somebody comes back to us with a complaint, but we, we're, we don't, it's not just, we don't just pass through here, and then we don't care what happens after the, the thing is decided, is that fair to say for us?
Yeah. And I'm joining with everybody else and wishing you guys success with this, I'd love to see it happen here.
Yeah, I mean, we've been, we're bound for a long time, so it's a lot of ideas, we don't know some of the restrictions. You know, we're just trying to figure it out, like, as we go, we've talked to a lot of people, there's a lot of people on board with it, so we want to make it happen, and we'll work with you guys, make it happen.
David, there's a checklist that Eric gives out to people, I mean, there's a lot of things that certainly wouldn't apply to this, but are we worth them picking it up and have them kind of go through and see some of the things that might apply to this particular? Is that the, the site permit?
No, he did actually, he's talking about this, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he already filled that out.
No, but there's another one that when we look at it, has a whole bunch of things on it, not that one there.
Not this, okay.
Yeah, there's another one that Eric, Eric gives out to, and we've looked at it for quite a few.
Yeah, there's another one that Eric, Eric gives out to, and we've looked at it for quite a few, and there's like two or three pages of checks. I checked with the BPW, but a lot of them won't apply, but I think that would be something worth giving to them since we don't have it, have it in, in the ordinance.
Well, Eric will watch the tape. You can call him and he'll, he'll be happy to give it to you and I'll remind.
If you think about a business plan, it's something you would take, go into the bank to borrow the money to make it happen. And add that kind of. That would be in a. Business banking.
We have a business plan. Wasn't required for something.
No.
Well, we're not, we're not here. We just, we'll, we'll let us do this in this area. Westlands, I saw that you want to know where the drainage is, how much parking we need, which all made perfect sense. You're going to be in construction. What's the lighting like? What are the hours of operation? How does it affect? I get it.
Yeah.
As far as like, you want me to share with my business plan, we will do that. Yeah, we'll get you.
Good.
Like I said, walking in when I saw you outside, even like looking through the application, I was still like, I don't know what a cat cafe. But I will say like, as we've been speaking, I was just looking up like mass regulations or what. I mean. This, I appreciate that this business model is new to Greenfield. There are kitty, kitty cat cafe in Peabody, Mass is operating under a bunch of USDA and Massachusetts regulations. And their website's really clear of like, this is what we do and it's a, it's a base regulation. The state knows what's up with this business model, even if we don't.
Yeah.
So I'm not saying we have to push this through tonight, but I, it's actually kind of reassuring to see like, this is the first time this is happening in the Commonwealth. It's just the first time it's happening in Greenfield.
That's one of the reasons that we're out of Peabody, because we know that it's in the state of Massachusetts and that it's going to govern our, their closure in Connecticut, but they don't.
Yeah.
We made sure that we were, you know.
For what it's worth, there is an actual TV show. That had, kept, and it would be worth watching it so you could really see.
You know, what's the joke? Well, you'll send us.
Yeah, I think. I want to see a cat cafe in operation. I mean, I had never heard of it. It was on TV and I might, imagine my kids, oh yeah, we've not took several of them. I said, okay.
I think they started over in like Japan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's hear a motion to, uh, let's see if it continue. Uh, table. I think we can make a motion to continue. The meeting and the vote until June, the meeting in June. Can I hear that motion?
Someone. I'll make a motion to.
All right.
Issue a continuance for the application of Cameron Ward for property located 305 Wall Street assessors map 88 lot. 18, which is located in the general industrial zone. For a special permit pursuant to sections two hundred dash eight point three, two hundred dash eight point four and appendix A of. Any uses of the zoning ordinance and our ordinance to allow a cat cafe at this location for a future date.
To a meeting in June.
The June.
All right, or is that kind of your second? Okay, let's go back. We already, we have a motion on the floor to decide the permit. So we have to do something with that. So let's vote to continue that decision till the next meeting. Okay?
Yep.
Peter, just say, yeah, say your name. Yes, you vote to continue.
Peter, what was that? I vote to continue.
Debbie Jokes, I vote to continue.
Mark Maloney, aye.
Aye.
Aye, vote to continue.
Motion to continue. David Singer, vote to continue. All right, so that's continued. Now we have. A motion of moving the hearing to the next, to the next date and that's on the floor now. Any other discuss?
That true? The next hearing's in June.
See, we have two other hearings that are taking up the next two months of hearings. So I get it. So unfortunately, it's trying to pack it into our schedule.
I'm, I'm sure.
You really have government.
You have all this time now to get, it's, when you come in next time, it's just going to be like that.
Okay.
On a sort of. Um. All right, so the, do we vote? Vote to, uh, continue the hearing until the meeting in June. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye, Debbie Jokes.
Aye, Mark Maloney.
Aye, Eric Green.
I did say, okay. And for the record, the applicant is, uh, is amenable to the, to the continuance, correct? You're, you're open to it. You're saying yes. You're not, you don't protest it.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You guys are cool cats. Waiting the whole meeting for that. Here's your insurance. Cameron. Your insurance. And that's important too. No, I'd like to see like, it, like it already set up for you guys.
If you have.
Certificate that it's.
You want me to purchase it?
If anybody.
Oh, maybe somebody will at least give.
That's okay. You can watch it from home, like you're watching a show on TV. Like you used to do the bald eagles over.
Thank you guys.
You're welcome. Thank you. Happy spring to you too.
Up later. Thank you so much.
Uh. You're welcome. Well, we could do that. Yep, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 20th, 2025.
Right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye by, by roll call.
Peter, what was the guy?
Chuck, you could say aye. You were there.
Debbie Jokes, aye.
Mark Maloney, aye.
Eric Green, aye.
I understand I wasn't there, although, although I did watch the meeting, I thought then, actually I'll say yes, because the notes were, I thought they were accurate. Okay. Let's talk about scheduling, uh, a balloon test and a site visit. That's all we're going to talk about. I spoke with the lawyer today, Tony Rosen, and he said that, uh, it's like, it's a four hour time limit, a four hour timeline that this gets done. I did send an email out to the concerned citizens. They responded that the weekend would be good. So I was thinking the weekend before the ninth. About the Saturday, what's the dates? Well, let's start with the fifth, right? We'll do a Saturday and then fifth, and if the weather's bad, we'll do the sixth. Or April 6th. Now, the other thing they offered as a second choice was. From three to seven on a weekday. Does that sound like a time that, or would you rather have it be a Saturday? Then we'll do a site visit at the same time.
Is this a full four hour commitment or this is a four hour window weather depending in terms of, I mean, I don't.
No, okay, good question. Our commitment, I would think is we're going to go there, let's say nine o'clock, if that's the timeframe, if everybody, is everybody okay with nine o'clock being the start time? Or do you want to do a little later? All right, so we, I would say we should go at nine. They'll put the balloon up. We can go down and look at the site. We can come back. If there are neighbors that want to, you know, show us how it looks at their house, or we want to see where they live, we can walk around and do that. Then we go home and the balloon stays up to want to park. Okay, so the concerned citizen, and we could do what we want. Like, let's say I get really into it and I want to see it from every angle. I can do it, right? You, you can go home.
But that's like a story call. This is to tell us how high it is and.
It's a hundred, it's going to be 170 feet.
That's what the balloon's for. Tell us how high it is. Like this is how high.
It's a visual, how, what it's going to look like.
And how tall 170 feet is.
They did it once before. Don't think they exactly, well, I don't think they actually, well, they did, but it was, I, the way I read the. Bylaw is supposed to do in 14 days, but anyway, so they didn't. So now they're going to do it again. They're willing to do it. We're all set.
And it's based on weather conditions.
Yes. Windy is the weather condition, not rain, by the way, wind.
So it's fine for me to do it the Saturday or Sunday of that weekend, but I could do a three o'clock in the afternoon with some note, especially if we had like some dates kind of. Penciled in now, I could make a point of not scheduling anything on those dates.
I would not be available for three o'clock.
You would, aye. Nothing.
I, I could do like five, but I couldn't do three. I could probably swing maybe.
Say what? Here, here, here's what I think we should do, if I may. Let's do the weekend first. If that fails. Then we'll try to bring it in for three to seven the next week and then Debbie can go at five. You know, everybody gets to at least see it for two hours. It's, you're not going to need the four hours. They're going to need it.
Yes.
But I want, it's. I was thinking more the concerned citizens have a chance to roam around and, you know, see what they need to see, so.
They're, they're going to want to see it in their homes.
Yeah. At, or each other's homes. I don't know what, whatever they want. They get four hours and question.
Is, is the beginning of the test, the nine o'clock, is that when they start putting it up and how long does it take for it to get up there?
I don't think it would take very long, but you know.
I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
I mean, the four hours is more, you know, just.
I mean.
Like instead of all day or instead of like all weekend. So I think that's really what it meant, the general.
They also indicated to take like a walk around the site.
Site visit, yeah.
Okay, so it'll be the site end.
They're going to be there. Like, so let's say if it starts at nine, we all show up, they're going to be there, Tony Rosen or his group. Then we'll take a walk. The, the concerned citizens are going to be invited to walk through. It's going to be just a big, it's like, it'll be a view, view of the site.
The thinking is that in the ideal world, we would all kind of show up at the same time and tour together and listen to what the reps have to say together. I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, like, and if it had to be free to. Whatever, and Debbie couldn't.
Then we would all show up at five or something.
Thinking for this weekend is that we would all really kind of.
I would like that. Yeah. And if you don't like nine, then tell me we'll, we'll meet at 10. That's fine with me. I mean, I don't care, but.
Be at 10.
10?
April 5th.
April 5th and 6th. 10 a.m. So they could do 10 to 2. I mean, they could come there early and start it at 9:30 a.m. Okay, so we're all agreed on that. That's it. I don't want to talk about. Anything else that needs to be added to this meeting? Can I hear a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. Good meeting.